Monday, August twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, regular session of the Animal Justice City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay, here. John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, August thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
It's all moved.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Four point oh public hearings, none. Five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations, none. Council action items, seven point oh community betterment. Seven point one discussion of possible action on resolution approving and accepting the work done by Boomer Anger with previously reckless excavating on the second street lift station and short improvement project.
Everything functions, Dan?
Yes.
In shape?
Yeah, so last week I, I mean, it seems that they've met the requirements for completing the project. Uh, this will basically be approving, uh, all payments except the five percent retainers that were required to keep every day after the closing of the project.
When, when did completion date occur?
Uh, I don't know what the substantial completion date was. Do you know what day that was?
I don't recall.
I mean, it's been in operation for...
Since December.
Yeah, so mostly been non-operational stuff that's dragged the project out.
But the, so the project isn't complete to date or is complete?
It is. It is.
Well, my, one of my questions would be, when was the project completed? The date, and per contract, what was the stated date of project completion?
So you're asking if he got, met his deadline?
Deadline agreed upon by all parties.
Well, I, I mean, I know it wasn't, didn't meet the contract date. I don't know the exact dates, but I mean, it was certainly over.
Unless there was changes incurred because of city decisions, he should have been able to meet the contract date.
Dan, did you have any change orders?
I don't believe so.
They just had the one on the, they did that sewer line, replaced that sewer line, and that added...
That was added to the project though, I would separate.
Right, she's saying that extended the...
That extended...
Added some days to the project.
Yeah.
And then were there any for weather?
Weather was an impact, yes.
So they...
Couldn't pour concrete, those are...
They had all summer.
The concrete's been done for probably at least two months.
But, I get that. Project was, you know, that's, that's where my focus is. The delays occurred by whom? Second Street was tore up, an inconvenience for the residents that, uh, border that. And if it was out of construction company's control, it's understandable. If it was within the guidelines they agreed upon at the time of contract, that's on them.
I, uh, for my correspondence, correspondence with Lindsey Beaman, uh, Snyder, uh, it looks like they, uh, made their recommendation for final acceptance on August third, which to me is basically when they saw the project as complete. I don't have the, I'm not aware of the contract that was fitted into before my time.
Sure.
So have you gone through the punch list and everything's done, everything's complete?
Right.
Okay.
And maybe that's something in the future we need to start making sure that... I know that it's been, recently seems like ongoing when last year Pumpkin Fest and we had Elm Street tore up longer than it was supposed to, and this was longer than it was supposed to, and now I hear scuttlebutt about Shaw Road. Is that gonna be longer than it's supposed to? So maybe we need to be holding these companies feet to the fire when it comes to meeting deadlines.
To do that, it comes down to the contract language itself, and my understanding is, I haven't reviewed it specifically, but just in discussions with the engineers, that the language in the contract limits our ability to do that.
Well, and it's like what happened on Elm Street. There was a penalty clause in there, but the penalty clause here was cheaper than the penalty clause someplace else, and they're gonna do it, so there's only so much you can do.
Yeah, they're very aware of how they're operating their business.
Uh, this is information that I believe our engineering firm that we hired to manage the project on our behalf should be providing to us, you know, where the lapse in the contract date is, the total days involved, the penalty that can be assessed if we so choose. And I haven't seen any of that information made available to us yet.
If I recall the contract, I don't think there were any penalties, any kind of wording in that contract, but I can't recall right now. Because that, that was brought up with the prior administration meetings.
Without that information, I don't feel we should progress with this. So...
Would you like to table it?
I believe until we can get, at least from my opinion, until we get those, my questions answered, I'm not willing to move forward with it.
Is that a motion?
I will make that a motion that we table this until, uh, those answers, are those questions? And any other one, questions that this council has at this time can be answered.
Can I ask what your questions were, completion date?
When was completion date? When was agreed contract completion date? And, uh, penalties to be assessed if so chosen? And if there, the two dates do not align with one another, what was the reasons for the delays? And I would ask for detailed explanation of the day, of the delays.
Did we not extend because of the problems? We gave them an extension, did we not?
I was trying to remember that.
I, for some reason, I know we discussed it, whether or not we actually...
And they made a request for one.
What's that?
I think they made a request for an extension.
Right, and we had that discussion.
I think Lindsey stated it was fourteen days. We need to put that additional line in there.
Fourteen days.
And then there was a couple other things that she talked about, fourteen days longer than that would be a fair ending date to add fourteen days to the contract end date, but...
Well, there again, I would think that would be part of a project summary when the project's completed, uh, which also may speak volume to the, uh, engineering firm that we secured with this project.
Do they usually give you a project summary? I know, yeah, I know, I...
This is the first part of my work with Snyder, so, I mean, it would be good.
And maybe that's something we need to request a...
Their engagement with this council, to me, was inadequate.
Well, but that extension, part of that extension was due to, what, trying to find a water line? Or sewer line?
Some of the things that we couldn't locate on our end.
Yeah, we, we did not fulfill finding it for them, so...
So, I believe that was like two to three days.
I, I think it was more than that, but...
If that falls within...
But it's still, there are some things that we did that did not fall through. So, there's a lot of elements in this thing, Rod.
Explain them to me then, and that's where I think the engineering firm should provide that summary.
Well, for one thing, if we're not going to impose a penalty, what's their incentive to get it done on time? That falls back on the administration for not doing that. For not putting that clause into the contract. Then you've got the fact that they needed to follow and find that water line, which we could not find for them. They, we said dig here, they dug there, it wasn't there. We said dig here.
Oh, yeah.
They dug there.
We dug up half the town.
We, we, the city...
I forgot that.
That wasn't more than two to three days.
It was more than three days.
So if we, uh, did not, uh, uh, have any, uh, penalty on them, do we still need to hold up payment, the final payment? We still do. Project's complete, we didn't, uh, have any penalties.
Might I say that's required, uh, by law, so that if there is, uh, leads from subcontractors?
Yeah, there's still...
You're talking about the retainage.
The five percent.
The retainage.
You're talking about retainage.
The five percent retainage.
Right, right, so but today, we want to approve the payment on a, on a job that we had no liquidated damages to, so we... Do we, do we still hold that up? Obviously Rod has questions about it, but, uh, is that a reason not to pay today? Is that gonna change our course in two weeks?
We need to do a better job with these engineers and contractors on the expectation the city has maybe.
And that being said...
In the future, yeah, I mean, I...
We're, we're holding up something that potentially was our oversight.
I'm not willing to say, accept that it was.
Well, we approved a project without the language in it to have any repercussions.
If, if that's the case, none of us here can truthfully say there was no penalty for not meeting the contract.
I wonder why that would have been omitted, it's usually in there, an ending date when the penalty passed.
Well, there's no sense in us talking about it anymore, discussing it. We could move to a vote, get the information and then, uh, talk about it at the next meeting.
Now, go. Going forward.
Going forward.
Yep.
But, I agree, going forward, we need to start setting a higher expectation of what the city expects from both engineers and contractors.
I agree.
In our projects.
Yep.
So I've got a motion by Rod. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kay. To table this for two weeks to find out the information that Rod reads. Would that still be a whole vote?
No, you can just...
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Seven point two discussion of possible action on chapter seventy four of the Code of Ordinances regarding definition of U T V.
Uh-huh, well, start since I brought this up the last meeting, um, Vern Schaefer brought it to my attention that we had a limit on, uh, a weight limit on this.
Yeah, uh, eighteen hundred pounds is what's listed.
And, um, a lot of them I see out there, and a lot of the manufacturers are well beyond that weight limit. Most actually, so, um, Vern and I'm sure other ones out there that realize sometime they'll be over the weight limit. Maybe we need to do some, some type of change to that, so...
So it's just the weight limit?
At, at this point, that's all I can see, that...
Okay. Well, I don't think, we briefly reviewed what the state sets up, and I don't think they touch on that. So, we should have the freedom to set that where we see is reasonable, the weight limit.
Can you speak up, Jacob?
S- sorry.
In that sense, it's such a light, I mean, obviously it's lighter than any pickup or a car or anything on the road. Do we need to put a weight limit on it?
It, it probably is good to have some, you know, I, I don't know that we have to have a weight limit. Uh, like, what I had said was, I don't believe the state law sets a weight limit on the U T V, so we should have the freedom in setting that. Uh, there's other aspects of our definition that come from the state law, but we'll have to get into the specifics, uh, see what Adrian's opinion is on if we should include that or not.
Well, those vehicles are, seem to be ever evolving in size. Do we pick a weight limit today and then have, is it necessary then to have to revisit that weight limit two years? Because the industry has come out with something larger that still qualifies as a utility vehicle?
So just eliminate the weight limit, I mean, if the state says that's a utility vehicle and not a car, do we go by their standard?
Well, but I don't... I'm fearful of it being open-handed then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just want to be careful not to include things that shouldn't be.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, and, but the other thing I was wondering, I thought about in looking at this, is a lot of communities charge ten, fifteen dollars for a license to operate. We're not doing that. Is that something that needs to be considered also? You know, it's, it's not much, but at least it gives the police department a list or knowledge of who...
Who and what vehicle?
Who, who's got what, I mean, we've, we've got licenses for bikes, mopeds that weigh a lot less. Um, why not the golf carts or U T Vs?
Like an operating permit inside city limits?
Something to that nature.
Like, that's so...
Because if you, if you're out in the county, you have to do it through the county.
That's a good idea, Rich.
It's just a thought, but...
And, and this stuff is changing. There's, um, a petition around right now for Jones County to have it approved for the county roads. Um, Delaware has it, so...
Jackson has it.
Jackson, the county, yeah, they, the whole state of Wisconsin, I mean, so...
They live on their all-terrain vehicles, don't they?
Yeah, just being progressive with it, so...
Vern, would you be up to a question?
Yes.
So your utility vehicle is fairly new as mo- as far as a model year?
Yes.
Vern, can you come up to the...
I'm Vern Schaefer, I live at four oh two East Central Street. Yes, mine is a thirteen model. It's a, it's just a two-bashender, and it weighs, um, I think fourteen hundred pounds. But what I want to trade, I want to give them a Mahindra, they're coming out with a Jeep, uh, U T V, and it weighs three thousand fifty pounds, and according to the ordinance, it doesn't comply. And half of them that are running around town does not comply either. So, that's my question, I just want to upgrade and... But I, it doesn't comply with the ordinance, and we don't want to put good money up to that, so...
So this still is a vehicle that the D O T does not require you to license plate card?
Right, right, yeah.
But it's the size of a little small electric car.
Well, a little bigger than that, it's like an nineteen forty-one Army Jeep is what it is, that's what it's a replica of.
It's, it's comparable size.
But way wise, you would have some smart cars that would weigh probably even less.
Yes.
So going weight limits here...
Yeah.
It's kind of mute.
Well, and that's why I said that.
Yeah, and this has a diesel engine, three-cylinder diesel engine in it, and that adds to the weight too, so... Because I know it's just sheet metal, but there is things that add to the weight.
And it qualifies as utility vehicle?
Right, right.
So our utility vehicles are getting bigger and our cars are getting smaller.
Well, even the golf carts and stuff are four-seater, six-seater, they're overweight, they don't comply with the ordinance.
Well, and most people don't seem to have a snow, slow-moving medieval sign. They don't have a canopy over the front seating area or a flag extending a minimum of six feet and high. Not the ones that I see, so, seaters like, there are several places where we're not compliant.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I've got the, I'm in compliance that way with the horn and everything, but it's just a weight thing. If I upgrade the weight, issues, so it's, it's a problem, and...
I, I appreciate Vern that you come to us with this beforehand instead of having to address it after the fact.
Yes, God bless you, yes.
Uh, you know, I, I just don't know... Obviously, we could set whatever weight limit we want, and it's the public's responsibility to make sure that vehicle falls within. Uh, I, I ju- at this time, I just don't know where to go with that, that number.
Well, it hurts us in that, that's why I stopped at the police station to see if it was any compliant seventy thousands.
Again, that's, that's very proactive on the...
I don't see much, one getting much heavier than that than what you're looking at, and, and I've seen those, they're very, um, they're very utility-based, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Vern.
Well, one more question, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I know about the weight, but what about the displacement on it? You said it's got a diesel engine?
A three-cylinder diesel.
Three-cylinder, okay.
Yeah. Are they U T Vs or gasoline?
If you'd like, I can do some research and discuss with Adrian and come up with some ideas to discuss further next time, or...
I mean...
Jeremiah, do you have much experience with an ordinance of this nature?
No, I don't, and, uh, this particular off-road vehicle that, that I guess is the matter, subject matter of this discussion is pretty new. Um, the D O T, uh, I've not heard back from them yet. They strictly mention it as an off-road vehicle and specified for that purpose, and they haven't touched on highway or street use.
I like the idea of having like a operating permit, and at least having these vehicles that are running around town that aren't cars registered with the city.
I agree.
So we know who they are and if they're in compliance with our requirements?
They, they need to show proof of insurance before getting the registration and so...
Sometimes there are people going rather fast on these things of the night.
So will I, Jacob, get a hold, get with Adrian and work on this?
That's okay. Thanks.
So we just...
Are we going to, in a sense, bundle all of that together? What the requirements will be for registration, uh, the weight limitations? Any other specifications that Adrian and yourself may come up with?
I think so, yeah, we'll kind of revamp.
And working with Jeremiah, because it's obviously his team is one that has to enforce this, and, uh, and, uh, their input, I think, should play, you know, factor in our decision. Now, if we threw the number out there, thirty-one hundred pounds, you know, the competitor for your, of your unit, whoever the competitors, you know, it may be thirty-two hundred that this council or the next council may have to address. So, uh, we'd like to get a, a solid weight limit, if that's what we're gonna go with, that, you know, we could, future growth in that industry could stay within, but then again, it's the, the private sector's responsibility to make sure their units meet those requirements. Thanks.
So that one will come back to us in two weeks. Seven point three, discussion possible action on resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Blue Max Enterprises Incorporated, including annual appropriation tax increment payments.
This is just setting a date of public hearing. Again, this is tied to the, uh, Community Catalyst Grant, which we're awarded for the Wortman property on Main Street, um...
Can you just go over, uh, real quick what, um, on their end, Wortmans, what requirements they need to meet for this?
The development agreement has not been, uh, developed yet. Um, that is something that should be done before our next meeting, uh, the, I mean...
I would think before we, uh, discuss this, we'd all want to know where we stood.
Is, I think the stipulations to get the grant has been, there's, that part's done.
Well, that is, but the, the TIF financing, um, do they have to meet a certain requirement on, uh, tax base? Or are they creating jobs, or what, what exactly are they doing on the, the TIF end too?
So, I mean, for the TIF to work, they, they're gonna have to create an increase in their property value. That's, I mean, if there's not, then there won't be any increment set aside to pay back.
Right.
Um, there's no stipulation on this, uh, that they create any jobs at this time.
I'm not high, I don't know how many artists she had in there before the fire. I assume she'll still retain them.
I'd guess about a half a dozen of these.
Yeah, I was thinking she had some from Cedar Rapids.
So do they work for the Wortmans?
No, I think it's more of a consignment.
They bring in art and then they hold like art events there too, like they...
They teach classes, baning classes.
Classes, yeah, she does, but, uh...
I mean, if we have a sales tax number that we could go off of, or what, they are, whatever they think they're going to... I mean, if we have a sales tax number that we could go off of, or what they are, whatever they think they're going to stimulate our economy with?
I, I mean, I don't have those, that sort of figure. Uh, I think-
I guess I-
The goal of this grant, and I thought, and I guess therefore kind of a goal of our TIF is to, to save a, a downtown building, um, restore it, and, uh, again, the impact of their specific business is, is more than the, uh, investment of the arts scene and not going to be a huge producer of sales tax.
But it's a big draw to the community. And just walk downtown, anything is gonna be better than what it is right now.
I mean, saving the building's one thing, but doing a TIF financing, we I would like to see more to it than this, more, more than, we're gonna give you twenty-five thousand dollars in TIF financing for, for I'm not sure what yet.
The idea is to, again, uh, encourage their investment in the structure. If you'd like to say something to come up?
If I may, Derek Lumson, Jones County Economic Development. Um, I think that the Community Catalyst Grant part of it is what's really gonna drive why the city should be involved. The Community Catalyst Grant was set up initially to take projects in downtown's communities that would have a catalytic effect. So, if this happens, these other dominoes will fall. X would happen, Y would happen, Z would happen. It would show that the city's invested in the downtown. It would show that this is a place to do business. Other businesses would feel that they could set up shop and open, adding to that tax base, adding to the people living downtown, which add to your tax base as well, fill up some empty storefronts. So, looking at it as one individual project, what is this one gonna do? And how are we gonna get paid back in terms of sales tax, people living downtown, those types of things? You're probably gonna be hard pressed to find it, especially because the state has no data to give you otherwise. The first of these Community Catalyst Grants were given out in April. None of the projects are completed yet. But the city as the applicant has to have some skin in the game. They have to have money that's financed. The Wortmans put in, city puts in, and the state puts in, and that's how these get done to help showcase and put those dominoes in effect. They work very similarly how the Main Street Highball Program does the challenge grants, that there's a dollar-for-dollar match of how things go in. And those have proven over the last thirteen years that those do show other effects, that they do bring in other business, that this building got rehabbed, or the building next to it looks like not as, looks a little more blighted than it does. So, they build them, and you start to build your overall tax base downtown. And that's really what the Community Catalyst Grant is meant for. TIF is just the easiest way for a city to help in that endeavor, because you could do it through economic development or slum and blight. And so, when you can couple it, those co- different ways, it still adds to your tax base. It just might take a little longer for one building as opposed to using this as a starter point, and then helping maximize what that looks like can be done downtown. Is the way the state has been selling it for the last year. And I, I mean, I understand that you want to number back on how to-
Oh, yeah, it sounds exactly like a streetscape program.
Right, I mean-
Which, uh, was great to make our community look amazing, but, uh, to stimulate the business downtown, i- it really did very little.
Well, in terms of not being comprehensive, and that, I think that's part of the problem. You have something that looks great, but then you don't have the businesses either.
So, we should have a good plan moving forward.
Well, I think that obviously helps. You need a comprehensive plan. I think you had a great plan with your streetscape. It's just that it was a streetscape plan, not a community development plan.
So, twenty-five thousand dollars should have a good plan behind it.
And, and I think that this does, because the state-
Right.
I think the nice thing about it is the city isn't on the hook alone, because the state puts in a hundred thousand dollars. The Wortmans have to put in money. They put in, to date, I think fifty-three thousand, and that's still climbing. And then the city's putting in twenty-five. If for whatever reason the Wortmans fail to complete the grant as required by the state, and the state has a lot of taskmasters out there, Little Island and Des Moines, then they pay back the money to both entities, regardless of what, or what new value may have already been added to that building. So, I think that this grant helps protect the city a little more than traditional development agreements between, um, developers and the city. Because you have the state in there as another player working to protect themselves, which automatically protects the city as well.
And, and again, like, the city's not paying any money out front.
Correct.
If they fail on their part, they don't increase the value of their property. We will never end up paying them because it, that, that has to happen before it's taken out.
And so, with that provision, you also give yourself a little protection too. If it doesn't increase it as much-
Right.
Then, how that works with the state will be in the contract the state sends you, and I don't know what that looks like. But usually what the state has done is they'll, it's not meeting the standards in terms of investment from the owners. They'll reduce their ask, and that'll allow the city to reduce theirs, kinda like the CDBG projects, I'm sure you've worked with water and sewer in the past. They pare it down to what was actually accomplished.
I agree. I don't look at it that the city's just gonna throw twenty-five thousand dollars to a downtown building on you and willy-nilly hope that something sticks. This was a business that was up and running. It was a viable business. It's people who are invested in the community. Doug Wortman is not going to set the city up and leave them high and dry. It's, I just see it as nothing but a win-win for our community, and long-term too. After the fire, the city really hasn't had much vested into getting the downtown brought back. I mean, a lot of communities have put forth a lot more after downtown fire to their communities than Anamosa has. I make a motion, we set this for September tenth at six o'clock.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Rich. Any further discussion? It's a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Seven point four, discussion possible action on section one twen- one sixty-five point twenty-three subsection seven and eight of the Code of Ordinances regarding driveways and off-street parking.
So, I guess just to preface this discussion, again, uh, if there is any changes that you, you guys are interested in, I think the appropriate action to take would be recommend those as the planning of the building. Before we proceed, just that's the process that our, our Code of Ordinances outlay for, for this. It's a building ordinance, and, I mean, obviously-
So, we're gonna put it to the planning and zoning? They're gonna make a recommendation, and we're gonna review it again?
Yeah, it's kinda backwards, uh, as what it would normally go, but, uh, I, I guess I think that's the appropriate way to do it.
Does everything the city does go to planning and zoning?
No, just the zoning ordinances. For example, the UTVs is not part of that section, so they don't have oversight there.
Well, I think it would be a shame to have our city, our community move backwards. I think the minute we start thinking gravel's okay and driveways, we create a whole new set of problems. Our nuisance properties, we're now gonna have weeds and stuff growing inside them that, it's just when we don't raise the bar for our community and try to reach for the best we can. And the majority of the people I've talked to do not want gravel driveways. So, it'll be a shame if we go backwards.
So, if we, um, follow our ordinance, uh, the way it's written for ourselves, obviously, first and foremost, we should take care of our own properties.
Absolutely.
Do you have a cost estimate on?
No.
And I think that working with our own, that we need to start paving and blacktopping actually needs to be done over time. And I think that the majority of driveways that, um, we have that are owned by landlords that are rental properties, I don't expect them to have to go dr- pave all their driveways. We can work with them too. There's a time that if we start moving in the direction to better, we don't have to have it done overnight, but steps need to start being made, and I think we need to start putting it in our budget each year to do some.
Well, the, the other portion of that is, if somebody can't afford to do paving, and they've got a gravel driveway now, it's gonna look even worse, because they're not going to do anything. Then it's gonna become a muddy mess. It's gonna, so, if they could gravel it and continually keep it updated, it might look a lot better than you think.
I'm gonna guess that that's probably not gonna happen, but-
Well, it, I mean, it's, it's one way or the other, because there's gonna be some, even if you put it in the ordinance, they're not going to follow. They're not going to pave, because now their gravel's gone. They're just going to continue to do what they're doing.
Well, aren't there businesses that have gravel? And are they going to choose to move rather than pave? I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a, there's different ways of looking at this, so, if you don't do something, it could go even further in disrepair. We could enforce it, but then the city's gotta follow it with the parking down at Casey's, that, that parking lot there, that we put new gravel in and then follow our own ordinance.
The fire station.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess if we're, if we're going to be the ones putting this ordinance in place, then we should be following.
Oh, absolutely. I have said that, I've said that two years ago. Absolutely.
I don't think we could tell anybody that they need to do it until we take care of our own.
Yep.
So, there's, I mean, that's ten years of budgeting, paving and-
So, send us back to planning and zoning, or just table it?
I'd, I'd, I'd like to see, uh, if that's the way to do it, I'd like to see it go back to planning and zoning. I'll make that motion.
To send it back to planning and zoning?
To send it back to planning and zoning.
I'll second it.
First by Rich, second by John, to send it back to planning and zoning, and-
Is there any stip- guidelines or anything that we were looking for them to review, or just review it and send a proposal back to us?
Well, the, the one thing that, in my mind, is from the street to the property line, that portion would have to be blacktopped, paved in some fashion, but after that-
When you talk property line, you mean through the easement area?
It would be on the backside of the sidewalk, whatever you wanna call it.
I really think if the gravel isn't running out into our streets, or, or washing into the public street, city street, I don't have a problem with the rest of it.
Well, and, you know, I, I've heard about the storm sewer portion of it, and if you go down at Elm Street in front of the, the apartment complex there, where the street, you know, before you get to, to the cemetery, there's a storm sewers there that's surrounded by gravel. So, you know, if we're gonna do that, then we need to pave at least around that storm sewer.
And we just had a paving project down there.
Exactly.
Less than twelve months ago.
That is ridiculous.
So, I mean, you, you can-
Obviously, that's not the real reason why we do it.
And once we lower the bar, people are gonna wanna know, why do I need to pave my sidewalks? Why don't just have gravel just- Or just keep lowering the bar?
I, there's a big difference between sidewalks and driveways. The big difference.
People look for loopholes everywhere.
Well, I don't see that this disgust sidewalks.
I'm just saying, in the future, we're just gonna keep lowering the bar. And then we're gonna wonder why Anamosa's such a nuisance community. I'm a hundred percent against it, but the majority will rule.
Mike Dearborn, four oh five North Division. Yeah, I'm the one who brought it up, and thank you, Rich, for getting it on this agenda. Um, but some of this talk is just getting way out beyond the, what's in front of you here. Sidewalks have nothing to do with gravel driveways. And Chief, do we have a nuisance problem right now with gravel driveways?
Not to my knowledge.
Huh?
Not to my knowledge.
I, I don't see it. I haven't seen it. Uh, I think it was Councilman Smith here made a good point. I think I caught it right last, last meeting that, okay, you're gonna make these citizens on their own property spend eight to ten thousand dollars, in some case, maybe even more, to put in a cement driveway. Okay, what if their property's only worth thirty or forty thousand dollars? You're not ever gonna get that money back. So, you've assessed them a, a large amount of money. And then, what Rod talked about was, well, then you're gonna double dip here, and you're gonna make the, the city do their properties. Well, guess who's paying for that? That same property, you know, is spending ten thousand dollars on a driveway. Now it gets its taxes rolled because of new street, or new, uh, pavement on parking lots.
And you're also-
That really don't have, just a second, please. That really don't need, I have no problem with, with where the city has gravel right now, none whatsoever. Maybe the cemetery, that's a little bit different. But as far as fire department, if they're fine with it, I'm fine with it. Casey's parking lot, you've got areas down there by the, uh, city shop, the, the branch dump area. There's places you need gravel. That whole mountain down there, that, uh, wastewater plant. Good Lord, you see that gravel mound down there? What are you gonna do there? Hire a helicopter and drop a bunch of cement down on top of it, or what? You can't solve everybody's problem and think that this is gonna lead to this, this is gonna lead to that. You, you're gonna drive yourself crazy with all these ifs, ands, and buts. I didn't mean to interrupt you now. What'd you, what'd you have for me, Vern?
I was gonna say, the other issue will be when people want to park their cars or trucks in their yards, they just dumble loaded the gravel right in the yard. Now we got new parking space. There will be other things that come as a result from doing this.
According per ordinance, I do know our ordinance system, you can park your car in the grass right now and make a muggle while you want. Not, not an ordinance against it. It's not a nuisance. You're able to do that. So, what's the difference? They're, they're able to park the car there right now. I, I understand that from here on out, yes, new developments like where you live now, absolutely you have to, and I've built in those, yes. You should abide by updated ordinances, and yep, those are your new neighborhoods. But you've got a lot of old existing neighborhoods in this town. These people can't afford it. They just can't, plain and simple. That's my main gri- my second is to re- relieve our, our storm sewer system. The more you pave, the more water's gonna go gushing into our storm sewers, and we have a problem with them right now. You know, you sat here and you've listened to some of those poor citizens over there on council and, and, uh, chamber with the water problems. Have you ever gone up there and noticed that there's no storm sewers on council? Now, give me a break. Who, whoever allowed that? Who allowed that developer to go in there and do that?
I believe there is storm-
At the bottom of it, not up top. And guess where that water's going? Down to the complaining neighbors below. And it's overwhelming the ones down on chamber. That's getting off-subject, but you, you just gotta understand that that's, that's half of it. His water run off, the other half is the sheer expense of it. I don't see it going backwards. I, if we don't have a problem now, why, why you, I don't understand why you think it's, it's going backwards. This came about in, I believe, oh nine or ten, when we had an overzealous public works director and a sitting council person, it got together and thought this was a good idea. Well, it wasn't a good idea then, and it's not a good idea now. That's all I have to say, unless you have something more you wanna comment me with.
So, using, what'd you say, two thousand and nine or ten?
Yeah.
So nine to, eight to nine years, this set as an ordinance.
Yep.
Passed through councils.
Hasn't been enforced.
This ordinance has been on the books that long.
Yep.
And passed through prior councils.
Didn't pass through, it just was in existence, if that's what you wanna say, yeah.
Not addressed until now.
Yeah. Well, no, I shouldn't say that. I brought it, if that's what you're getting at, when I was on council, yes, I brought it up, on more than one occasion. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion?
Well, this, this is one of those ordinance that has the potential to be a very slippery slope. We have a stance that need to be taken into consideration as well. A new neighborhood, if the ordinance says that you only have to have hard surface from the street. To the end of the easement, or the beginning of the easement, however you wanna look at it, and gravel the rest. That applies to a new neighborhood on us through stipulations.
Well, and most new neighborhoods have covenants. I know where I live, the covenant says, from the street to the garage has to be cement. Can't be blacktop, has to be cement. So, most of those are gonna be governed by the covenants.
If there is one in place.
If there's one in place, which most new developments have covenants.
So we need to make sure we capture all of those. If, I mean, if this group is willing to, or interested in having this ordinance reviewed. I would be in agreement with the motion and, uh, Jacob's. Proposal to send it to the planning and zoning, you know? They have a vestment in this as well as a group, and they should, they should be reviewing and sending a recommendation to us then.
That's basically what it was to send that back.
Can you repeat the motion?
To send it back to planning and zoning. All right. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Seven point five, discussion possible action on feasibility study proposals for joint law enforcement facility.
We discussed through past few meetings, uh, mostly in relation to the old hospital, but, uh, there's. Definite need at our police department for a new facility, and, uh. In talking with, uh, Sheriff Frogger, we kinda came to the conclusion that. The old hospital would be a suitable location, at least not worth further cost and time to explore it as an option, and so. Uh, the architectural firms you're speaking with, uh, had them revise their, revise their proposals, um. To specifically just look at a new facility, um, and, uh. That's what I was provided in, in, uh, email to you guys, um. I guess I, I mean, we're not as pressured, uh, if we're not considering. Use of the old hospital, but I think it's still a urgent need that we need to be considering, um. I know, especially with the heavy rain we've gotten recently, there's been use of quite a few buckets in the police department, and, uh. Um, I guess I'm interested in your thoughts and, and, uh. Would, would eventually like to work towards approving a study of this sort.
Can we just ask the needs of our officers?
What do you mean?
Uh, you know, hey, let's just talk to the people that are actually doing the work and using that facility. What they would like to see in a, a police station and, and a police department, get their input. I'm not sure why we're hiring an engineer to do any of this.
This is more than that, um. Yeah, we can absolutely do that, and I mean, I think it's part of every scope that, that architects will do that, as part of their study, um. But no one. Is capable of coming up with a accurate, uh, cost estimate, which I think is the. One of the major objectives, because if, if we're gonna do some financial planning, uh, we need to know that.
Well, and I think if we're gonna put a state of the art facility for our law enforcement in, one that. You future plan for the needs of law enforcement. Um, I think it's beneficial to bring somebody in that has worked in that and done that.
Has the county said that they would be interested in a joint project, or is that supposition at this point in time?
They showed interest, but have not committed, um, in, in participating in a joint study, um.
I mean, at this point, we're using buckets to catch water. What kind of study do we need to understand? We need a new police station.
Well, it's not that we need a new police station, it's what we need in a new police station.
Okay, so now we're beyond that step.
The state of the art, what new police stations out there.
And state of the art is great, uh, I would like an affordable police station. I mean.
The study is not covering, yeah, if we need it or not, it's, um. What, what our, our future needs, what does that facility look like, and what does that facility cost to build?
But if we do.
Well, I can tell you right now, when you get an engineer involved in it, it will be. Thirty-five, forty-five percent more than what the city of Anamosa needs to spend on a facility that is functional.
Clarify for me, if the city does a study, it would be just what the city needs. And if the county says, oh, we wanna work with you, then we'd have to do another one, so we would. Have to do a study that would incorporate both the county and the city, because what you would plan for the city wouldn't be big enough, or. Wouldn't have the kind of jail facilities that you would need for a combined group, right, or wrong?
That's correct, I, what, what I'm proposing is a, is a study designed to study the issues of both the city and the county. As a joint facility, sharing the cost between the city and the county. So it's, it's looking at it at the same time.
But.
But this county hasn't said, go for it, right?
Not yet, but since we're the one proposing it, uh, I think they're looking for us to take the lead on it. Again, anything that we approve can be contingent on their approval.
Their approval, okay.
So, let's say we take the lead, we go with this, three months down the road, we're still waiting on their decision. As to whether or not they wanna participate, what's our next step? I mean, at what point, at what juncture?
I mean, at some point, we have to move on on our own.
Yeah, at what point do we draw the line in the sand and say, make a decision?
I, I mean, I think probably three months is, is an accurate timeline. I, when I spoke with them, I gave them. Kind of the expectation that we would look to get an answer, uh, within a month or so, so.
Be nice if.
I, I don't, and they, they weren't appalled by that, I, I don't think they, I think they understand that we're looking to move forward, so they. Have to make their mind up soon.
I would like to see, by the time January comes and we're sitting down to do budget, that we know where we're going.
Well, even before then, we need a number of our budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm talking about, is by the time we sit down to do budget, we know where we're going. We have what we need. To implement it into a budget.
And I know at one time, there were some preliminary plans drawn up.
There were some plans, uh, the only ones that I've seen were based on the location, uh, next to the fire department, which would. I mean, simply won't work at this point.
Well, I realize the location may not work, but the plans in and of themselves, is there something there that's workable? Is there something there that we can utilize?
Perhaps.
For just a police station, it's just for a police station.
For just a police station, perhaps, um, I think if you were to put it in another location, you might. Consider not having a two-story, it was designed as a two-story in that location, that would be the only major, and you might have to revise.
Yeah, but part of that was for, um, garage bays.
Parking underneath.
Yeah, so that, that you can put someplace else. The floor plan in and of itself is something that.
I'm, I'll see if we can find those and what benefit that has, but.
Yes, Richard.
Can I speak?
Please.
Might be able to solve some of these questions. Richard Stivers, five oh one South Carnaville, here in Anamosa. I made this, uh, opinion, what's I've developed or thought about of my thirty-three years in law enforcement, here in, right here in Anamosa. What I am thinking, as a police officer, I had a lady come at me with a knife, and I had to stop her with, draw my weapon. Uh, I had a guy hit me in the back of the head during an arrest and knocked me down to the ground. We had a pickup one night chasing officers at a, at a theft site. So officers are not secure like you think they would be, just because they have a gun or two, um, wearing vests and stuff. They're not a hundred percent secure, and right now, throughout the USA, you hear about officers being injured and so forth. So, my feeling is, whatever building you put up, or whatever department, joint, or whatever, I would like to see it a secure building. One similar to this old library building up here. Thick walls, a good solid roof, uh, a building that a tornado would not take down. Or I couldn't throw a hand grenade at it and blow holes in it. A secure building for the safety of officers from our local department, or the sheriff's department, whoever. When I had an office right there, on the other side of that wall, that big window over there, I had an office, that was my office in there at one time, there was. Three and four of us worked out of that, out of that room. Uh, that's when it's still a fire, uh, department garage over here. But anyway, I didn't feel secure in there, not at all, because somebody could walk by there and. Shoot at me, or throw a hand grenade at me, see me through the window, and I kept the shades bolted most all the time, and I really didn't feel secure. So, whatever building you put up, have them design it to be a secure building to protect officers. Whether it's no windows, on a ground level, or whatever, uh, I'd like to see a big stone building. On, at least on the ground level, that is secure, that they can't be shot through, blown up, or tornadoes blowing it down. We got a new building, a reasonably new building here in Anamosa right now, with a good puff of wind could take it down. So, you don't wanna police department that way. A joint, single, or whatever, just make sure it is a secure building. That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
I guess, plus my understanding that the county has done. Maybe early stages of a feasibility.
They have studied their.
With the engineering firm that they have contracted?
They contracted with Chi Battery to study their current facility, which that is, that has been completed, um. It just reemphasizes on, on their part, their need for.
Need for another structure. They have part of it in motion.
They're, yeah, they're addressing some of their needs. I'm not aware of plans to address the needs in their jail, um, specifically. Just because it's almost, again, I, this is not my profession, but it. I, I don't know that it's possible to address their, their problems with their jail in the current space.
Oh, no.
What, there's, there's no doubt, we can all come to an agreement on, as soon as you bring an architecture firm or an engineering firm in. The price is going up rapidly, uh, because they're gonna get their cut as well. Whether it's this council or the next, yeah, I don't know how long this project will take. I don't know if any of us are area of expertise to try to design something of this magnitude. If we can have our wish lists, but, you know, that's where the, the feasibility is, unfortunately, the, the architect. That's their area of expertise.
And I agree, Rod.
And you know what, it's time we leave some things to the experts.
That part sucks, the money up front, but on the back end, if. We don't do it, and then all of a sudden, oh, we think we should have this, or we forgot this, or this would have been important. All of a sudden, we're sitting with a police station that's semi obsolete within five to ten years.
And I guess just, I'm, I'm gonna pull out an example, but I'm only speaking from what I've heard, I don't know the situation directly, but. Our wastewater plant was eventually sized smaller than the engineers designed. Um, and now we're facing problems with being overlooked during storms. So it's just, I mean, yeah, there's, there is a cost there, but. It, it's a level of expertise that, um, I, I think is, is crucial in this type of facility.
This, this may be a project that, you know, has such a high dollar amount on it, that we don't budget for it, we may have to go a different route.
No, I mean, I fully expect the cost of, of this facility is probably gonna have to be a bond.
That, that'd be my initial, but there again, you know, wait for that dollar amount is in front of me, and then we can react at that time.
What's our bond limit?
I, I don't know the exact.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Um, we were just talking about this the other day, I wanna say it's. It's six hundred thousand without holding a vote of the people.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it has to go to the vote.
I, I think it's, so I think it's, um, four hundred thousand before the vote.
Is it?
I think so.
Yeah, I, all's I know is there's a, there's a.
But, but our, our debt limit is five percent of whatever our overall city value nature is, I don't know what the exact dollar amount is.
We, we, we have a lot of room in our, because we don't have the only debt that goes against it, is our general obligation debt, we only have the one left now. And the fire truck.
And it's also my impression that, from a county standpoint, they are in favor.
Millions.
Nick, you too.
They find it favorable to work and have a joint facility location. It's something that they're not opposed to, but they're, they're also sitting there in the same situation we are, is what's gonna be the cost of this, and. That is gonna determine the route we go. So, we can pursue on the joint side, which I believe we should, because those, those two entities are so parallel. And, and, and actually cross over into each other's daily business, that it becomes ideal to me. But timeline, we need to, we need to have a decision of some sort in place, when it becomes budget. And what other, uh, route we'll have to go at that time, so.
Are there any state or county rules that say that the county facility has to be here, or could it be in the middle of the county, or in another town?
They're currently, they're currently working within the city limits, the city limits, so, well, I.
Well, I think.
But the county seat.
Well, yeah, but I. Well, yeah, but I, I'm thinking, um, if I remember this right, uh, the county that El Caters in, the jail is out in the county. It's not in any city limits.
There, the feasibility would drive that, I think.
For them, it might have.
There is some benefit, and I think that's been expressed by people in the county especially, uh, to have the jail near your, well, especially near your courthouse, just for transportation purposes.
The courthouse.
Which is why that hospital location becomes ideal for that, but I, I get that the, the structure is not what they're looking for. I believe it's in our best interest to move forward to find out what this project is gonna cost, um, from a city standpoint.
Still getting two specifics, uh, the firm that came in with the, the lowest bid, and again, this doesn't tie us to any future, you know, this doesn't require that we, uh, have them oversee the project, this would just be, just in the scope of the study was, uh, a firm called ISG and they're local, locally based out of Waterloo. Trying to see if I can pull that up for a cause and what.
Do you know, have they designed any police stations?
Uh, yes, um, just gonna pull up the, the folder. So they, their firm is actually based out of Minnesota. And, uh, I know they provided some examples of projects that they did. Rock County Law Enforcement Center, I'm guessing that Rock County, Minnesota. Mankato, uh, Public Safety Center. Those are the two that they highlighted there.
Did you give a cost of the feasibility thing?
Their cost, uh, let's see. Was, their total cost was seven thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars, which again, but I would be totally splitting that with the county.
Who was, as far as quotes or bids, who, who was next, if they were the lowest, who was second?
Chi Hattery was next. At sixteen thousand five hundred.
Wow, that's a big difference.
I, I, I cannot say exactly how much, why there's such a large difference. My only best guess is I get the feeling they're trying to grow this direction, ISG, and so this might be kind of a project with their name in, in the area. But that's just my guess. Because the, the last one was, uh, F E H designed and they were, let's see. Again, they have the most, uh, expansive scope. But they, their cost is twenty-six thousand six hundred forty dollars.
This is the first one, are they doing a building survey? On our current facility?
I, let's see. Let me get to the front, their, their, unfortunately, the ISG proposal is really large, and so they've navigated it on a computer, it's not-
We can probably take that out.
Their-
If they are, because we know it's beyond our needs.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, um.
I'd rather have them concentrate on something else than wasting any time looking at our old building, rather than-
Yes, I, that's not, no.
Rather say not gonna spend any time or money upgrading it, so don't have them spend any time on that.
I agree.
I would agree with that, and that, I mean, that is-
We need to build something new, we have no.
Have you contacted any of those communities that they designed for, because I'm just curious, if they've done it and they're so far below the price of everybody else, if they were satisfied with their work? Did they do the job?
That's, that's my concern as well, we're talking nine thousand dollars difference, more than their initial bid, that, there's red flags there, and is, and we are fully aware the devil is in the details.
There, there's questions in my mind about-
What, what are the details of that quote? That, you know, next thing you know, they're coming back and saying, well, it's five thousand dollars more for this, and, you know, that was not part of our initial.
The man came in, looks like Lisbon, is kinda- So, you type this out.
I mean, if, if they're, if they're equal, it certainly wouldn't be wise on our part for an, an additional nine thousand dollars expenditure.
I mean, I can certainly contact, uh, with people, I, I think they're, I mean, I was, I was surprised when, when these came in, because the initial proposals that we received, again, this included studying the, the hospital site, uh, their proposal and Chi Hattery's proposal were reversed, they were much closer in cost, but Chi Hattery was lower. Um, and so when we revised it and they sent me this price, it was surprising, but, uh, I mean, I guess the only thing we can do to, to verify is to check with the projects that they've worked on.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable having that information. Um, you know, a lot of times, projects can go and they, they get, they'll say it went fine, but you contact and they'll say, yeah, they were okay, but, and I'd like to know what those buts are.
So are we gonna table this till next meeting and get that information along with, find out i- if the county at this price is willing to do half? And then make a decision next meeting, is that the direction we're going?
I think we need more information.
The county's always currently doing business with Chi Hattery, so, they may have a preference there as well.
Yeah, there is benefit to that. There is a benefit to that, um, just because, I, I expected them to stay the lowest just be, uh, with their knowledge of this county facilities, that's less what they have to do now, but that's not what came in, so.
All right.
Balls in your court?
Sure, yeah.
So we let Jacob work with this more?
Yep.
All right. Seven point six, discussion on possible action on resolution, setting public hearing on proposal to sell and avail hospital site to Weber Stone Company.
To, uh, sell the property, we have to provide a public hearing, um, and, uh, I guess the, if, if that's the wish of the council, um, the packet's provided a, uh, proposal and notice of the public hearing. Uh, just, the stuff in the packet listed the sale to Mike Deitmar, we corrected that to Weber Stone Company. And the price listed in there is based off of the city's investment in the property. Um, my understanding that, uh, that may or may not be agreeable, um, so I guess that's what we've gotta determine the specifics of the sale and, uh, proceed from there.
Have you provided them with a copy of this proposal yet?
Not, no, not the, the written proposal, we, we discussed some of the, we discussed the price.
Um, and was the price agreeable?
Again, they, uh, Mike gave his opinion that he, he thought it should be lower. He preferred a dollar. He, that's the extent of our discussion.
Is it because it's?
It does, I, I mean, it does have a very extensive cost to, to rehabilitate.
I would be on board with selling it for a dollar, especially with somebody who's brought as much information to us as Mike has with us and done as much research, he very much understands what he's getting into.
And the fact that, at this stage, it is not generating any tax base.
Won't take, it won't take us long to get that money back, once we get on the tax roll.
Right. Right. Because if, who knows how much longer it may sit there.
You know that Michael move, he gets it, he's gonna get at it and get stuff done.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have the public hearing on, was it September tenth?
Yes.
At, uh, six o'clock, and for the payment of the sum of one dollar.
I'll second the motion.
First by, first by red, second by K, to have the public hearing on September tenth and to sell the property for one dollar.
And then please get the copy of this to Weber Stone as soon as possible, so they can review what they're buying.
They have their attorney look at it.
They'll need time to review it.
Yep.
So, please clarify, Jacob. What the motion is, that we will entertain the sale of the site only to Weber Stone.
Correct.
We've met all other requirements that the city is bound by with the selling of city property.
To the best of my knowledge, yeah, we just, I, I mean, we discussed with Adrian, he prepared the materials, but my, my understanding, our only requirement on sale of properties that we provide public hearing, uh, does not necessarily have to be sold through a public auction or, or closed bid.
Have we been neighborly above and beyond and let the adjacent property owners know that this site was for sale?
In November.
Do you mean anybody or?
I know we, we've, we've worked on this, we've, a couple of times we thought maybe we had a prospect here. But then I fell through and it just was back in the city's hands. Have we done due diligence that everybody is aware?
In November.
I get, I, you know what, I didn't think about that, Rod, that's the problem we ran into with the bowling alley and lumberyard. Why wasn't I made aware?
In November, it was posted in the paper, it's been in the paper since then, it's-
There's been articles written.
Aside from us going door to door, or you living under a rock, I think, uh, everybody is very aware that it was available.
Um, I do think though that alley that the city owns going from North Carnaville to the property line of the hospital, if we vacate that alley and then divide it and give to Soto's and then Benson's, because there's no sense in having traffic go through there, and it's gravel, and it washes off into their yard, and the city owns it.
Yeah, I'll look into it, vacating that if necessary.
Yeah. At the bare minimum, I think that needs to be looked at.
Any further issue?
Mike, could you, could you come front and center? Thank you, sir.
He just wants to-
Mike Deitmar, Weber Stone Company, finally something he can hear me, right?
Mike, if you become-
Thanks for booking a check, buddy.
If you become the proprietor of this property, I certainly want you to be successful with this, with your, your ambition, your, the vision of what you have up there. But I have to learn from my past lessons, and I wanna make sure everybody had fully understood that this property was for sale.
Okay, the, the only thing I've got on that, uh, was sent, sent to me today, uh, November twenty-third, in the local town paper. Uh, it, it was stated that, uh, there was a, a public hearing, they had to have the, uh, if I, uh, if I get this here, uh, they had to have the proposals in by December sixth of two thousand seventeen, and then read at the, uh, I, I believe December eleventh, um, this will have to pull up here, but I got, I gotta use some readers here, going all shady on you. Yeah, it, uh, it was, uh, December sixth, two thousand seventeen for submission to the city council. Uh, and the eleventh, uh, meeting, the bid shall be cash, so on, and it was published, uh, November twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. So, that was, as far as I know, Rod, the last time.
That was, yes, at that time.
It was in the paper. Yeah.
Okay, and we have now fulfilled all of that again.
And then, um, I didn't, at that blue sheet, I don't know, Councilman Schaefer there just showed me quick, he says, hey, here, here's what we've got here, uh, and, uh, you know, of course, we, you know, I'll, I'll more than likely have, uh, have, uh, the lawyer go through and, uh, take, uh, take a look at the property, see, you know, no different than what we would if we were buying anything else. No, I, no sense reading that right now in front of you. Um, but you, Rod, it, um, I, uh, I'm really looking forward to this, I, uh, I think we can-
Oh, I understand, you, I mean, you're a guy that loves a challenge like this.
Yeah, it's a big one, and I, I know we can get something going there that's gonna benefit, uh, the community, you know, you know, there's no doubt about it.
That, and- You will be successful, I, I, I believe in that, uh.
And, and, you know, uh, it's getting, it's, you know, it's another two weeks, another two weeks, and, but that's, you know, this is a process, so, you know, we all have to live with that, including me, I just, uh, and I don't wanna move forward on anything else as far as, uh, I've got another, uh, uh, company I wanna get, to have the roof take a look at, but, uh, or take a look at the roof part of it. I just wanna make sure that if, if it's the case like tonight, if it, it says yes, I'll mo- most likely get them in there before the two, the public hearing. Uh, it's just another little bit more time on my end and their end to have a second opinion on the roof, uh, the third, actually, I've, I've already got two.
So then, at, flipping this calendar ahead two weeks, is that, that meeting then, we could decide to sell for whatever agreed-upon dollar amount? Are there gonna be stipulations? You know, in a sense that Weber Stone cannot turn around and resell the property within a timeframe. In a sense, if it's a dollar, it's basically being given, gifted.
And I know one, I know one thing, I'm not gonna do that, I I'd, if you need uh, I'd have to check with our insurance folks if you need any type of, you know, performance bond put on it, I don't think so.
I'm coming from past lessons learned. There's a way to do business is when you move forward robustly.
I'm definitely not looking at selling it, not, you know.
But, you know, is that, is that dialogue we should be having tonight, or we just wait and have that at the next meeting?
I mean, at this point, we're just setting the public hearing, I mean, I, if this doesn't concrete the uh.
Stipulations to the contract.
Yeah, the the sale agreement, um.
Would you be opposed to any stipulations? Such as you can't, well, as an example, you can't sell the property within five years, you can't, you will have it enclosed within six months, you will have maybe it abated within a certain period of time. Would you be up for that?
I'd meet any challenge you put against me, easy.
Okay.
You couldn't dream one up, I can't either.
I know, the same rules as where a hearing bug in Casey can.
I'm impressed.
Me too.
I don't, I don't think it's needed, but it makes you feel better, you know.
Well, I. Mike, I take you at your word, but I'm I'm also hearing from that they've been burnt before, so they wanted it right. But I've known you long enough that.
Yeah.
Uh, take you at your word.
It's not you. Every rule comes about because somebody took advantage.
I'm sure it's, it's also.
Probably all the gravel driveways, now, I went around town, there's no gravel driveways, it crushed limestone, so I don't think I'm gonna have a problem.
Pack that bad boy down.
Crushed limestone, yes, no gravel, that would be western Iowa.
Whoa.
They've got gravel out there.
Did you hear that?
That's gravel out there, yeah.
Okay.
We gonna need a little lesson on that, or? Cement driveways, I never seen any cement driveways, ready mix, concrete, Portland cement, concrete, pot mixed asphalt, actual cement, that's, the powder goes in. Oh, the terminology here, it's just.
So, for the public hearing, will the contract have to be as it's going to be approved, right? For the public hearing, is that correct? That was a question.
Yeah, I I think, again, we're setting the public hearing, I don't know that the.
Contract has to be, but it's going to be for the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, we just have to have it finalized by the next meeting so that the public has a chance to review it before they make public comments.
So, in the next two weeks, if any of us has a suggestion on what we think needs to be added, we can just shoot it to, run by Adrian, or? I I guess my question is how.
Probably, probably should be within the next week.
Yeah.
I would say, I mean.
I would say.
Well, yeah, I have it.
I mean, Adrian's gonna need time to put this together, so, any, anything that you really wanna see, we should probably determine tonight.
Right.
I mean, if you want stipulations on uh you know, required timeline and stuff like that, that probably I'll need to turn that.
So, how far do you wanna go? Do you wanna go rough abatement? Do you wanna just say can't sell it within so many years? How far do you wanna go with the stipulations?
Five years, no sale on it?
And.
And a rough.
Have it enclosed, secured, what do you think? Eight months?
No, uh, the the roof will be done before uh winter.
Okay.
As long as we can get, as long as we can get the guys there now.
Provided. Well, get get the guys there and provided the weather, cooperate, so.
Well.
Starting to get a little later, but.
And I think the problem was the last time property that the city owned got turned over to a business, it was not used for the intended purpose the city was told it was gonna be used for, and that was a huge problem with the businesses around it. So, I don't know if I, cuz to me, I think that was the only problem, is it wasn't used for the intended purpose. And so.
What is that zoned up there?
But that was a little different.
I know, but that's kind of what we wanna not be burned on is that we gave away property again and here we are, the public of the.
Well, he still has to abide by any zoning requirements up there, so.
Right, but.
But I think it's some sort of.
Uh, I think hospitals are on under residential, I believe.
Is it a C town?
Yeah, hospitals can be, I I don't think that area is residential, but it, hospital is an accepted use.
So, we'd have to change the zoning, right?
Reason, yeah.
Depending on what, I mean, we still don't fully know what it's going to be used for, so.
Depends on what he does.
Right.
Are you starting another hospital?
That one needs a little competition.
Yeah.
And mental health issues are rampant, so.
I don't think we should bring up my issues.
We'll have to start having a council meeting there.
Cheaper if you own the place, I guess. Uh, obviously, there um, security and obvi- kids getting in and out of it, that was part of our biggest reason in taking it over, I I believe, is to keep, keep it secured and nobody getting hurt in there, so if you can, to me, if you can keep it secured and get a roof on it, so it doesn't continue to be a nuisance property is the biggest.
Well, and and I know you say it's gonna be quick, but that's why I'm going eight months, give you that time, give you a little bit of leeway due to weather, cuz who knows what kind of winter we're gonna have, so.
I fully intend to have that secured uh and electricity to it and all before, so I can work in there this winter.
That'd be great, yeah.
So, what I have right now is five years, no sale, it was enclosed within eight months.
And secure. Property secured, like, just nobody coming in and out, broken windows, I just don't wanna see it continue that way.
Yeah, I know you talked about the windows.
There's a broken window there now.
Well, yeah, but you you didn't do a full count on the windows, but you're gonna get the windows that are broken closed in right away.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, to, you know, to uh uh, so we can uh uh start with the demethication of it.
And then inside, how long do you think it's gonna take for you to bait the, everything in there?
That one, I can't tell you, but, I mean, you put a timeline, I'll meet it, but.
Well, I'm not gonna do that.
That's gonna be a tough one, I mean, cuz that that's, that's what I plan on doing this winter, uh, on that nine thousand square foot uh where the roof is, is leaking, the roof area.
Well, and until you start tearing it apart, you're not gonna know exactly what it's gonna entail either, so.
I think you got a motion on the floor, you made it, Rich.
Yeah.
Second.
I had a second.
Rich and Kay.
Yeah, we already.
Where were you at?
Let's keep moving.
We we already blew by that one.
You put, you put the Dutchman on the back of the schedule.
Any further discussion, we'll go for a vote, that's a roll vote.
Sorry. Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
I guess, uh, so, uh, two, two weeks in, we'll be a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Bring the checkbook.
Don't bring it in pennies.
Alright. Thanks, folks, have a good evening.
Yep. Eight point O, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve a renewal of beer and liquor license, none. Eight point two, discussion, possible action to approve the appointment of Curtis English, Alexander Fa- Faber and Dylan Kula to the Animal Society Volunteer Fire Department.
Some move, second.
First by Betty, second by Kay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Eight point three, discussion, possible action on resolution hiring and setting the salary for police officer fifty P for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich, any discussion?
Jeremiah, a- upon your review of fulfilling this position, do you believe it is necessary to add an additional officer? Are you, are you just filling a prior vacant position?
We're filling a position of officer in Michelle Giall, who left the county.
Would, uh, you believe that it is necessary to have this extra officer or another officer?
Yes, I do, um, it's difficult at this time to make uh requirements or required scheduled uh adjustments with what we have right now.
Will this put you at seven full-time officers again, or eight?
Eight.
Eight, excluding yourself, in the eight.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
So, do you believe this is necessary for public safety?
Absolutely.
And it's a roll vote.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
Nine point O, public works, none. Ten point O, finance, ten point one. Discussion, possible action on pay requests, numbers eight and nine, and the respective amounts of fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents and retainage per terms of contract to Boomerang Previously Reckless Excavating for the second street lift station and sewer improvement project.
This is directly related to the, I mean, this is the same project as we discussed about the final acceptance earlier, which we take into some questions, uh. Is there a different opinion on the pay request? Uh, I mean, again, the work has been completed, uh.
Probably don't wanna do the retainage, though, approved that retainage yet, cuz you haven't approved the project.
We haven't paid their last payment.
Pardon me?
Right.
Well, this is the last payment aside from the retainage.
Yeah, the fifty is the last payment besides the retainage.
Well, my same questions still are unanswered.
So, we table this first.
So, whenever you wanna, I mean, if, fifty thousand, seven ninety-one is the last payment?
That's the last payment prior to the five percent retainage, yes. That's payment number eight.
And the ninety-nine thousand? I mean, we could pay the ninety-nine thousand, but not the fifty.
Or, that's the. No, you can pay.
Well, we can't.
We can't.
Opposite.
That's the retainer.
Yeah.
Alright.
We have, we have to keep that for thirty days after final approval.
Okay, I was, thanks for clarifying, I was confused and I was thinking differently. Unless you got answers.
Nothing different than what we had like an hour ago.
Motion to table.
Second.
First by Rod, second by Betty, to table it for two weeks. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Ten point two, discussion, possible action on pay request number ten and the amount of hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents to Colachi Construction for the water treatment plant improvement project.
Some move.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor.
Oh, I'm waiting for Nancy.
Oh, sorry, I should've looked up.
Nancy Schaefer, eight oh three, North Division Court. So, this is payment number ten?
Uh, yes.
Um, can you tell me how much is left after, if you would pay this amount? Maybe I'm doing a shape. There's the, do you have it up, Jacob?
I have it, I just gotta find these, that, but we're.
There is.
The balance, uh, including retainage is a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
A hundred and.
A hundred and three thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars.
That's including the retainage.
If I'm looking at this correctly, uh.
So, how much is the retainage?
I do.
Am I?
Look at, I I see a different number, Jacob.
Okay, let me double check that.
Oh, that's, I don't think that's the right.
I'm on the wrong project.
It's three hundred and fifty-eight, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars and one cent. And the seventy-nine thousand, nine seventy-four is the retainage in that.
You you said three hundred fifty-eight thousand, yes, yeah.
And the retainage is the five percent, which is seventy-nine, nine seventy-four. Total, they've all been paid the one point, with this payment, it'll, total payments to date is like one point five million.
Can you tell me the percentage quick?
Percentage of the to.
If you pay this tonight, what's the percentage of that you would have paid out on that job, minus the retainage?
Um. So, one point.
Is there a specific, like plumbing? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, if I'm looking at this right, specifically for plumbing labor, thirty percent has been paid out? Looks like.
It's about seventy-six percent without the retainage, that's what they've been paid so far with this payment.
So, that's what they're reporting, is thirty percent?
Thirty percent of the budgeted for plumbing, or the value, it looks like thirty percent of that. Plumbing material, it's looking like a hundred percent of that's been paid out. HVAC labor, uh, sixty percent.
Um, do you have money coming you haven't gotten or something?
I I'm.
I was trying to stay on top of it.
And HVAC material, seventy-seven percent.
Okay, thank you.
The work has been completed, uh, approved by the engineering firm.
Correct.
So, I I would assume it's been completed to a minimum of satisfactory. Uh, we're going to be moving forward to the next, uh, agenda item of timeframe.
But that's on the water treatment.
Yeah.
These are both water treatment.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, now I see it.
So. What did you say was gonna be left on the books that w- the city will owe?
After this payment?
After, if this is approved.
Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
An additional three fifty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, the engineering firm has blessed the work to date. We need to move forward with it.
All those are in favor, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Ten point three, discussion, possible action on change order number two to increase the contract sum by three thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents, and then increase contract time by eleven days for the water treatment plant improvement project.
So this is a second change order?
Yes.
First one was credit to us.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, the contractor, Colachi, requested a time extension of ninety-nine days, which our, uh, engineers did not feel appropriate, reviewing their specific request. They came to recommend for our approval of eleven days extension, and that eleven days comes from the, at the beginning when, uh, there was a delay in providing notice to proceed to them, and so, uh, the eleven days, I think it's fair. Despite that fact, that's not going to give them time to complete the project in these eleven days.
They're not gonna have it completed, are they?
It's.
So what good does it do us to say we're giving you eleven days, knowing, knowing that in eleven days it won't be done?
All, I think all it really does on their end is provide them more days before we start, uh. Charging, uh.
Applying fees and fines.
Applying fees.
Well, if I, the memos.
Or.
I'm in the wrong business.
If the memos I have read, if I am understanding it, the, the eleven days that H R Green is in a sense permitting for us to allow the shortcoming was on Colachi's end. Their lack of complete documentation, up-to-date doc- documentation, and required documentation resulted in these eleven days.
Uh, I don't.
For the, uh, initial approval.
I I don't, I don't think that's correct, I think there was a longer delay initially, s- uh, regarding that, uh, notice proceed, and some of those days were due to their, um. On their end, and so they removed those, and the eleven days is basically what they could determine was outside of Colachi's control, if that makes sense, that's the way I understood it.
Well, in, in Mr. Adams, uh. The H R Green representative, in the last parag- or, excuse me, in the last sentence of the first paragraph, states, all the events listed in your letter were known well before the thirty days, and the date of your letter, including notice to proceed, date, equipment, lead time, etc. Prior to that, he stated where the shortcomings were, and they are all on Colachi's side.
This, the statement you were referring to.
I think in good faith, what H and R Green is doing is giving, asking for us to give them eleven days. That's what I believe where the eleven days are coming from.
The statement I think you were, uh, referred to is, I mean, it, the, the majority of what they were requesting were situations where, uh, their fault. Uh, they were asking for delayed, uh, extensions due to delivery of the, the water filters, which again, they knew.
They knew it was required, yeah.
Full and all, what the, the lead time was going to be, um. There was, I I, yeah, I th- I don't have it pulled up, but. I mean, I think. I guess I think the eleven days are acceptable, uh, ultimately, I think H R Green and, and, uh, Jim and myself are on the same page, our, our goal is to get the project complete as soon as, as possible, um. Uh, we'll see if Colachi's on the same page. That's primarily, uh, H R Green's, uh, concern about the project is a lack of staffing, lack of adequate management.
Well, I think you just had the key statement right there, lack of management.
Any further discussion?
I do like the fact out that it is Mr. Fitz, project manager for H E Green, had, uh, four items of concern listed. Which item number four, I believe, is what that first paragraph is, that's documentation that Colachi either didn't submit, wasn't complete, or was in added.
All those are in favor, signify by.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, alright.
So nobody's made a motion to give them eleven more days?
No.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion, give him eleven more days.
First by Betty.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Cody. All those are in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Carried. Ten point four, discussion, possible action on the payment of bills for the month of August twenty eighteen.
Before you guys make a motion, make sure you exclude that check from Boomerang, to Boomerang.
I'll put it with that out.
Oh, so make the motion minus the check. Will he be able to get paid in two weeks with that, or will he have to wait a whole month?
Um, usually, I mean, that's, we don't usually.
I mean, in two weeks, if we have our answers and we approve the payment of him.
You could put that on, I would think, as an agenda, I don't know if you wanted to do that, I could. I mean, yeah, I mean, I would put it out before the council to vote on it again.
Right, but we, we tabled that for the next meeting, right, paying him, so my question is, if we approve it at the next meeting, you will cut him a check and send it, correct?
Correct.
We won't have to wait till, cause you only cut checks on swimming house?
Once a month, maybe, yeah, I can do that, it's up to you guys.
Can you just hold this check until then?
That would be, that was probably what I was gonna do, without actually having to cut another check, avoid it out and reissue.
Okay.
So, I'll make the motion to approve minus check number six-two-zero-nine-one to Boomerang.
I'll second it.
And then, I just have one small concern, I guess, so we paid, uh, fifteen thousand dollars in tree removal. And we paid, uh.
How much money did you say?
Fif- fifteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And we paid, uh, a little over seven hundred, Mingar mowing and landscape, seven hundred forty-four dollars for new trees. So. Obviously, it's expensive to take trees down, but very seldom do we ever put trees back somewhere, and I'm not saying we need to take them down and put them back in, in the right of way, but.
Yeah, the.
We should have a plan to replace trees we take down somewhere in our city.
Well, I think, but weren't, were these the trees that were placed at the park on Trees Avenue?
No, these.
I'm not sure.
These are the ones, I think, that they put in, Woxiana, maybe, Tyler?
I'm sure it came out of that budget.
Cause I know, we had, we had some down on Trees Avenue that were placed.
Oh, and.
In that little park there.
Oh, and that could be too, he doesn't actually have a location, I was just assuming it was, cause he took those ones down at Woxiana.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, people get pretty sensitive about their trees.
Well, I'm talking about the new trees. The new trees for Ming.
We should, we should have a good plan about putting them back somewhere once we take out.
Well, I didn't understand, like, on the monthly report, it says they removed eight trees and yet we paid.
Yeah.
Si, thank you, couldn't think his name, all that money for tree removal, who removed the trees, who decides who removes the trees?
When they're dead or dying.
Okay.
Then who does the work?
Yeah, how do, how, Jacob, do they contact you to see whether it's gonna be Si or whether the street department does it, or?
No, Greg made that determination, probably due to what their crew can handle, I'm, I'm guessing, I don't.
So do they get bids from other tree removal services, or they just automatically always use Si?
I don't know.
Maybe you're just, uh.
Used, used Tim.
Yeah.
But the city did all the cleanup, all he did was drop them, and the city took care of everything.
So that helped with cost?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, I don't know what equipment they've got left down there, but I mean, that's what was done for twenty, thirty years.
And I, I mean, we take a lot down, a lot of trees, I don't know what we budget for it.
He, it's, he's always within his budget, I think it's within the tree removals.
I was, if it's, whatever department, if the parks and wrecks have that in their budget, then, or if the streets has it in their budget.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing up the, Kay, the fact that we're putting it in our monthly report, but.
Are we really doing the work?
Somebody else is carrying the weight.
Yeah, so, in the monthly report, should it say, we actually did this and we contracted with somebody else to do this, instead of making it look like the streets has done it all?
And, and.
Well, I, I don't know for sure, I can check, but he, they might've taken care of eight trees themselves, and then there might be additional that will, I don't know.
Well, Si's, Si has ten trees on here for removal.
So.
My other question is, it says that they were mowing and string trimming all of the city properties, so I had a discussion with some ladies just the other day, how, because they thought that Parks and Rec did the mowing, and I said, no, I think the city does. There are some places the city mows, and some places Parks and Rex mow, and I didn't know which was which, I need some clarification.
So any, anything deemed a park's property, uh, the parks takes care of the maintenance, most of the maintenance of the mowing, um, anything else is pretty much on the street department.
Okay.
Well, Rem, like, Remley Woods, or Woxiana Park, or Ballfields, or.
We were talking about.
St. Patrick's, that's.
Around the L C C.
Around the L C C, that would be parks, but if, the cemetery, or, uh. Trying to think what other prop, I mean.
By the fire station.
By, by City Hall, or, uh, fire station, that, that's all streets.
The police department.
Police department.
Around the, we have, the streets are around the wastewater too, and water plant, right, I mean, we discuss that.
They. I think, I think the street does do it by the wa- uh, wastewater, I'm thinking the water mows around.
Yeah.
Which, which does, can, when you talk cemetery, leads me to a question, um, about the bills here, looking at this, I see we paid for inmate labor for the cemetery. And, I don't know, two meetings ago, I know there was somebody here who said Greg was not getting inmates anymore because he wasn't getting qualified inmates or something to that effect, I'd like an explanation as to why he's, why they're using them, if we were told that he couldn't find good ones.
That, don't all the departments use them when they're available, but the numbers are down?
Well, this says specifically cemetery, which would be great, and we were told by more than one person, by the way, that he couldn't get qualified inmates, but yet were using them, so, give me an explanation why he used them, but we were told he couldn't find them.
Well, maybe he, they found some that were, because I've seen a couple of them work in, uh, Holy Cross, weed eating.
He didn't have.
With the guy up there.
He didn't have, um.
That's, that's, Holy Cross isn't city.
I, I know, but they.
And I don't re-. I don't remember the conversation being qualified, I remember the conversation was that the availability of having them was a low or something.
That's, that's not the words that were used, was availability.
I, I'll look into it, give you some explanation.
Okay.
Well, and I saw inmates drilling, uh, holes for the fence at the Gothic statue too, I have pictures on my phone, cause I was so surprised that they were there on a Saturday.
And I talked to Ward, he said he requested twelve more.
Yeah.
Cause it's, I mean, twelve more prisoners, cause there's use for more, he said they've got a lot, he's trying to get more in here, so they will be available, so we need to seek the use of that for that cost.
So the prison's growing.
Yeah, we need good people in prison, is what we need to.
So I. I, I, I feel like we were misled a couple of weeks ago, I'm just gonna say that.